All right, it's 5:30, time to call the meeting to order. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, commissioners, have you had a chance to look at the agenda? Do you have any modifications to that?
I have no modifications, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, I'd like to bring item J from the consent agenda into items for commission action for general discussion. And that was the only one I had.
So I entertain a motion?
I move that we adopt the agenda as printed, with the exception of item J in the consent agenda being removed for items for commission action.
I second that motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried, thank you. Okay, item two, appointments. We do have an opening on the Economic Development Advisory Board, and the applications are due by September 17th of 2021. So if you are interested in serving on that particular board, I would like for you to consider that, and think about that, and fill out an application, so we can have your name to consider to fill that vacancy. The deadline on that is September 17th, 2021. So if you're looking for a place to land, if you've never served before, you have an interest, we appreciate you coming forward, thank you. Okay, moving on, the consent agenda. We made the modifications, so I'm going to ask for a motion on the consent agenda.
I move we accept the consent agenda as modified.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Okay, the next item is item four, presentation of the 2020 audit, yes sir?
Good evening, Neil Phillips with Jared Gilmore and Phillips, here to present your audit for you.
All right, thank you.
Let's dive past the letter and dive straight into the audit report. Page one, two, and three is the independent auditors' report. The first paragraph talking about what we audited, being the city of Independence as of December 31st, 2020. The second paragraph talks about management's responsibilities, and the fact that all the numbers in here are your numbers. They're your representations of what happened during the year, and how you ended the year. The next couple paragraphs talks about the auditor's responsibilities, and the fact that we audit following auditing standards that are generally accepted in the United States of America. We follow the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide, and then because of the amount of federal money that you had flow through the city last year, it was above the 750 threshold, we also followed government auditing standards. So there's actually three layers of testing that we have to do when we come in to do your audit. Bottom of that page talks about what they call a basis for adverse opinion. In the state of Kansas, we are allowed to do what they call the regulatory basis of accounting. A lot of times, people refer to it as the Kansas cash basis and budget laws. Means we can't spend the money if we don't have the money in the bank, and we can't spend the money unless we have public approval. So it's a different basis of accounting, meaning we can't even obligate the funds without having the monies in the bank or that public approval. The biggest difference there is we don't record infrastructure. So we don't put a price on our water lines, our sewer lines out there, and then depreciate them out over their useful life. You're just going to see that the cash and unencumbered cash balances are reported here. So if you look at the third paragraph down on page two, it's what they call an unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis of accounting. And I'm not going to sit and read the paragraph to you, but what that means is that based on the testing we did, we feel like you have a materially accurate representation of what happened during your city, during the year, and how you ended the year, without any further modification being needed. So we feel like you've got materially accurate numbers presented here in the audit. The next couple paragraphs talk about the supplemental information and our responsibility with such. And as you read through those paragraphs, you're going to see that we do take full responsibility for everything that's in the bound document, meaning we did audit tests on it. And then the very last paragraph on the top of page three talks about government auditing standards. It tells you there are other audit reports that are out there. Because we followed government auditing standards, there's some additional reporting that we do. Some auditors actually hand you two sets of reports. The federal government calls it a single audit reporting package, so we think it makes better sense to put it all in the same document. So you're going to see those reports at the end of this. But that paragraph is telling the users that there are those other reports that are out there. Page four and five is where we spend the majority of our time. And it shows users at a glance, and this is the definition by the state of Kansas, is to show users at a glance that you're in compliance with the cash basis laws of the state of Kansas. Meaning we cannot obligate funds in excess of any unencumbered cash balances. And if you look over, it's the fifth column over, ending unencumbered cash. If you glance down through there, at a glance, you can see, any of those that would be negative would be what they call a violation of Kansas statutes. You glance down through there, though, there is two of them that you can see that we got, that are negative. There is an exception to that rule, and that is if you have a signed grant agreement, or you have a signed loan agreement. And in your case, you had both. The grant fund actually was negative, because our grants require we spend the money, then they mail us a reimbursement. Then the other one was your project fund, in which you have the revolving loan out there at the state. They make you spend that money, then they send you a check for it. So your fund actually ended negative in those two funds, but they both met that exception, and so you did not have a violation of Kansas statutes. I like this statement number one, though, and that's why I spend the majority of my time here, is because it helps users, you know, like the city patrons, that they see that we have $12 million in the bank, and they wonder why we're not doing this, or why we're not doing that. And this kind of helps define that, because it listed out by the different funds. Like your general fund at the top. Your general fund would be like your police, your parks, your city hall, your city manager's office. You can see there, they started the year out with $254,000. We brought in 7.9, spent 7.6, so actually ended the year with 700, or $573,000 of cash carryover. Cash carryover is very important, like in the general fund. We do not get our first tax payment till the end of January. We've got to have cash in the bank to legally pay those bills in January. So we've got to have some planned carryover to make it into the new year, so that we can continue paying our bills legally. So cash carryover was $573,000 in the general fund. But then the next section kind of helps break down why we can't spend those monies in the different areas. You've got your library fund, the special alcohol fund, the industrial fund. All the different funds there, the description, the title, kind of helps define where we can spend our money. You know, we're collecting money for the employee benefits, or we're collecting money for the crime prevention program. We can't spend that on the sewer project. Has to be spent with this crime prevention grant line. So by looking down through here, you can see where our monies are held at the different fund levels. So it kind of makes better sense of, yeah, we have $12 million in the bank, but here's where we could, it's earmarked. That's maybe the best word, term for it, earmarked. But I do want to point out, you can look down at the very bottom, and I'm looking at the totals on page five, you actually did have a pretty good year as a city. We started the year out with $10.9 million. We had a canceled encumbrance, meaning we had accounts payable that ended up not going through. Then we had a receipt, or cash receipts, expenditures. And those expenditures under that Kansas cash basis law includes obligations. So it includes accounts payable. Because you can't obligate the funds even. That's one of those state laws. And then the last column, or the fifth column over there, ending unencumbered cash, cash carryover. A lot of people refer to it as cash carryover reserves. Or you'll hear it called fund balance or equity in a GAAP world. But as you can see there, we actually ended the year with the $12,705,000 of unencumbered cash. So we carried that over into the new year. Then for audit purposes, we add back those payables and encumbrances, because those are included in those expenditures, to get to actual cash balances in that very last column. To see that we have actually $15.4 million in the bank reconciled. All right, the rest of this will go quite a bit quicker. Pages seven through probably nineteen, twenty, somewhere around in there, are the words. They call them the footnotes. Footnote number one is by far the longest. That footnote talks about what Kansas cash basis is, what the budget laws are. Talks about the funds that we have in the state of Kansas. You pick up a majority of the city audits in the state of Kansas, you're going to see this same footnote in number one, because you are following the Kansas regulatory basis of accounting. Where on page nine, footnote number two, starts getting into information that's specific to your city. The first thing we talk about there is stewardship, compliance, and accountability, in which we talk about compliance with Kansas statutes. That first paragraph talks about the fact that you did meet that exception with those cash basis laws. So it says, yes, those were negative, but then we cite the statute and tell everybody that those funds did meet those guidelines. The second item that's down there at the bottom, it was noted that we did not publish our quarterly treasures report. You're required to publish it within 30 days after each quarter's end. And it did not happen. And two of the four quarters weren't published within that 30-day requirement. Sometimes that's hard, because you get, you try to get it to the city. Well, first, we've got to get everything reconciled from the prior month. Then we've got to get it into the right format. Then we've got to get it to the newspaper. And a lot of times, you get it to the newspaper, it takes a little bit of time before they can actually get it published in the paper. That's not a penal statute, nobody's going to jail for it. We just have, we're required to look at that and test that. And this year, we had two of the four quarters that were late. Something to note, there's a typographical error on that page. You are a second-class city, and we've got you listed as a first-class city. Word processing, you know, we brought this paragraph in straight out of the Kansas Municipal Audit Guide, and I missed, that I should have got that changed to second class instead of first class. But the requirement's still the same with the first-class and second-class cities on publications. The next page, we talk about deposits and investments. You are limited in the state of Kansas of where and how we can invest our monies. And we talk about the fact that all of your monies were secured at year-end down there in that last paragraph. Page 11, everybody likes to see this schedule. Well, per se. This is the long-term debt of the city. List out all the different bonds. You have general obligation bonds. You can see there, we had five of those. We had two of the revolving loans. And then you had some capital leases down towards the bottom, in which you've paid three of them off during the year. You have four of them left. Which one of them was new, which was the John Deere tractor and bush hog. So you started the year out with $10.5 million. Brought that up by 480, paid that down by 1.3, so actually ended the year with $9.6 million of long-term debt. Or mortgages or notes payable, however you want to say that. The next page, actually, it's the next two pages, show you the payout. It listed out in the next five-year chunks, and then there are five-year phases after that, because most of your planning is done in five-year increments. So you've got the next five years. You can see, if you look down there towards the bottom, or the bottom of page 12, your totals, you can see like 2021, we got $1.6 million of principal and interest scheduled to be paid. 2022, $1.6 million. Goes down a little bit in 2023, 2024, $1.2. But we try to always schedule our payments to be consistent. So sometimes you'll have one that pays a little bit more, one that pays a little bit less. When we do our planning, we always try to do that planning in those five-year phases, to make sure that our principal and interest payments kind of stay steady there. But you can see the payout of those, and when they pay off. Our 2021, or 2012 bonds actually do pay off in 2021. Actually, they pay off in October 2nd. So coming up before too much longer, you'll have those paid off. All right, I'm not going to sit and read each of the different footnotes to you. I am going to have you turn to page 20, in the interest of time. Page 20, again, defined by the state of Kansas, is to show users at a glance that you're in compliance with the budget laws of the state of Kansas. So this would be the publicly approved budget. So like the top line is the general fund. We had a certified budget. So certified budget, meaning you approved it, went through the public hearing, published it, got all the taxes levied, did everything, was $8,660,000. We had some budget credits, which budget credits are refunds. If you get a refund during the year, that actually extends your budget limit by a little bit. So you have a total budget of $8.1 million, and we spent 7.6. So we were actually below our publicly approved budget by $502,000. Yep, that's a good thing. As you glance down through there, you can see that, and I'm looking at the last column, all of your funds were actually under the budgeted amount. So under our publicly approved amount, so that's a good thing. Page 21, and that's like 55 pages now of information on the funds. You're going to see, the biggest adjustments that we had were some accounts payable adjustments, in which it's getting those bills that we pay in January charged back to December. But like the general fund there on page 21, we put a prior year comparison in there. So you can see in 2019, like the very top line is property taxes. We collected $1,546,000 in 2019. In 2020, we collected $1,406, but we actually levied $1,542. So that very last column of $136,000, that's our citizens that did not pay their property taxes for 2020. So the hope is, that comes in on the next line down, delinquent taxes. That $74,000 that was collected in 2020 of delinquent taxes, those were the people that did not pay their taxes in previous calendar years. So hopefully, that 136 will come in in 2021. It's hopefully a bigger number there. But the schedules here are in your budgeted format. So when you pull out that state, the state budget forms that David, then they'll prepare for you, and they bring to you to approve, you're going to be able to line that up with this, with the audit. Because this follows that same format. So with that being said, because I'm not going to go fund by fund, I'm going to have you turn all the way back to page 81. That's how we fly through some pages there. If you are going through this, David knows where every single one of the numbers came from. He worked very closely with my staff to get the audit completed. If he can't answer a question, we'd always be glad to field a question as you're reading through all the individual funds. But I don't think any of the numbers in there should be surprising. We were, you were pretty close with the numbers that were reported to you previously. I'll show you the adjustments here in just a minute. We just, like I said, it was some accounts payable issues of the stuff that was in January that needed back to December. But on page 81 and 82 is the first of the section because we followed government auditing standards. So this is the third set of rules and testing that we did. The first one is the schedule of federal awards, listed out by the different US departments. As you're glancing down through there, you can see what put us up over the limit. We were looking at, I'm looking at the last column. The total of $779,000 of federal monies that you spent during this last year. So you've got federal tax dollars. I always want to say, didn't come out of the local taxpayer's pocket, but per se, it did. It's just a much larger taxpayer pocket when it's coming from the federal level. But you're above the 750, which required us to do this additional testing, in which you can see the biggest chunk of that was the Sparks money that shows up there on page 82. It's the very last federal program that's listed. Your Sparks money, you actually got $528,000 and spent $528,000. That was the culprit, put you up over the limit. If you turn to page 83 and 84, this is the first of those audit reports. The first one is looking at internal controls and compliance in accordance with government auditing standards. This report is looking at internal controls and compliance at the upper-city level. We came in and bank reconciliations weren't being completed correctly, or we didn't like the way you were doing cash receipting, cash disbursements, or we didn't think you were getting accurate numbers on a monthly basis. We'd be required to report that in this schedule. As you read through that report, it is what they call an unmodified report, because we had no findings that we needed to report that rose to that level that needed to be reported to you. The next page, page 85 and 86, takes that down to what they call the major program level, in which, when you get the federal money in and you're over the 750, we are required to go in and test a certain percentage of your federal dollars. And when I say test, that means we've actually got to pull invoices, we've got to look at reporting, we've got to make sure that you follow the laws and regulations that are out there with the federal money that you've got. And actually, the federal government steps up and gives us a list of items to test on an annual basis. You know, we can't, we couldn't test you for every law and regulation that's out there, but they send us a list and say, tech, this, 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 this. There's 14 areas of compliance that we're required to test for, and that's, so we're going to have a minimum of 14 items that we've got to look at with your federal programs. This last year, we did test your Sparks money. Of course, it was the biggest. It's the easiest to meet our percentage threshold. You always pick the biggest one so that you can meet your threshold. Well, not always, there are some rules in there about risk that comes into play in that. But when it's the first year like this, they're all considered what they call high-risk, and so we pick the biggest ones so we can get to our percentage. We tested your Sparks money, meaning we pulled invoices, we pulled reports. We made sure that you were spending your money right, and you were reporting, you did the sub-recipient monitoring, you did all the different types of compliance that's required there. And as you read through that report, you're going to see it as an unmodified opinion, meaning we had no problems that rose to the level that needed to be reported. Page 87 is where everybody says I should have went in the first place. The federal government requires us to summarize on one page the entire audit. They don't like to look page by page. They want to see it on one page. That first bold heading that says financial statements, that was the audit report that was on page one, two, and three. As you read through that, you can see it was an adverse opinion on GAAP. However, it was an unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis. The next bold heading says internal control over financial reporting. That was the audit report that was on page 83 and 84. And you glance down through that section, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, no non-compliance that was required to be reported. Then the next bold heading says federal awards. That's the audit report that was on page 85 and 86, in which you can, again, see no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies. It was unmodified. There were no findings to be reported. We tested your Sparks money. Your threshold for type AB program was 750, in which you didn't have any, because you didn't have any total grants over 750. And then low-risk audit T, you have to go more than two years having the government auditing standards testing done, then with no problems. And then you also have to issue GAAP financial statements, because somebody at the federal level doesn't understand Kansas cash basis is a much safer basis of accounting than GAAP. They require GAAP financial statements. So every city that we do, and every school district, and everybody we do, basically, whether it does K-MAG, they're all considered not a low-risk audit T, which, what that means to you is that we have to test at least 40% of your funds, your federal funds. That's what that means. All right, there's another letter that was in your packets. That's in your packets only. It does not go out to the public and to everybody else. Actually, some of your granters now ask for it. It is what they call a letter to those charged with governance. I go to my software and download what report I need to send, that I need to print out here. That's actually what it's called, a letter to those charged with governance. And I'm going to make light of the letter, because it is boilerplate, because we had no disagreements with management. We didn't encounter any difficulties. We didn't have any large estimates that needed to come into play. I'm not going to sit and read it to you. It is a boilerplate letter, but it is important that you do read through it, because it's got some good information in there. Then the third page that's in there is the adjustments. So that's where the numbers went from where you last seen them to how they're showing up in the audit. And as you glance down through them, you're going to see that the first three take up the first page and a half, and they all have to do with accounts payable. And then at the very end, we had an adjustment with the Streets project to cover some local funds. That once we got everything done, Dave and my staff went through stuff, and they decided we needed to make one more additional transfer to make sure we had enough cash carryover in one of the funds. Then attached to that is what they call the management representation letter, which that's signed between management and the auditors. I call that the reminder letter, because as staff read through that, as management reads through that letter, they should have talked to me about everything that's in that letter. I'm going to tell you it's a boilerplate letter, because we didn't have any significant lawsuits that we needed to talk about, any significant conflicts of interest, problems with granters, problems with the Department of Labor, problems with the IRS. It's a boilerplate letter, because we had none of those issues that needed to be discussed between management and the auditors. But it is required that we show you what representations have been made between the auditors and management. And that letter's a couple more pages long, because it includes a bunch of stuff about federal monies in there now. Or this year, because of the government auditing standards are important that we did. We also completed the Housing Authority audit, which we brought with us. They actually get a separate audit that's required to be prepared. It has been prepared, and David has a copy of those, and he'll distribute that to their board. But that audit is done also. And then we also have the Independence Library that we do also, and that one's in process still. Is there questions on me?
No, I, the presentation that you gave was thorough. It was easy to follow. Congratulations to our financial team, Lacy, David Swankr, all those involved, for an accurate forecast in budgeting. When you look at the numbers, generally, they're pretty close, a majority.
Yes.
And that's when you forecast, and you know, you're just, you're picking something that you think will help be, will be reasonably close, and they really did a good job. And I, I want to thank them for all their effort, the hard work that they've done, and that we have a good audit. Thank you.
All right, guys, I'm going to sneak out. I've got another one.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for being here, Neil.
Mayor, would you like to go to that item J that was pulled off?
Yes. I'll get there, hold on. Okay, next item would be J. Consider authorizing an engineering HEAC study of Building D to save energy, lower costs, and increase the future marketability of the building. Excuse me. John, how are you this evening?
Doing wonderfully, thank you. How are you doing?
Great.
One of the things that happened this winter is we had a freeze event inside Building D that took out one of the coils within the system. We have a, in many ways, Building D was designed for a much bigger hospital than it was. You know, it, half the building was demolished, and some of the systems are simply not sized appropriately for an office building, and not appropriately for the size of the building that we have left. So what I did was, especially after that coil failed, I, I inquired as to, to get a consultant out here to just give us a quick look at the system. And actually, PEC at, I was talking to the project manager for the work that we're planning on doing related to our water systems, and they said that PEC had a HVAC engineer that they could send on out. And so for no charge, he came out and reviewed our systems, took copies of our current blueprints, and they came up with the proposal to do, first, it was an energy audit, and I actually took the scope back down. He looked at an entire energy balance for the building, and the initial cost was around twenty-five thousand dollars. And what I told him is what we're really looking for were ways to find relatively inexpensive projects that could pay for themselves as they cut the energy use of the building. If you look at the, if you look at the building energy costs, you know, as a homeowner, you expect, okay, in the summertime, my electricity's going to be up because the AC's running hot. All right. And in wintertime, you expect my gas bill's going to be high because I'm, you know, running the furnace. Building D's electrical bill is, it's not exactly a straight line, but from month to month to month, it's very close. Part of it is the, the design of the building and the design of the systems. We're running a tremendous horsepower of electric fans on a continual basis like it were a hospital. Like, in some cases, like it were a bigger hospital. There are a couple of offices, if you go into them, there is a very significant wind noise from the ventilation system, such that, you know, you really have to increase your volume in order to have a conversation. That's the sign of a system that is not properly tuned. Additionally, when you talk about the hospital to building aspects, it sounds like we have a ten-to-one air, ten air exchanges per hour. I mean, that's a lot. So what this study is based on is what simple ways can we find to reduce the cost of energy consumption within the building? And by simple, I know that there had been a study done at the past where they talked about using variable frequency drives on the motors for the fans, which is expensive. This consultant right here said, "Well, you know, you can change out the pulleys on them, and you can reduce the speed." And, you know, that's exactly the sort of solution we're looking at. Low-cost solutions where we capture eighty percent of the benefit for twenty percent of the cost. So.
The, on that exchange, it would be a normal office, or an office building in that configuration, that size would be, the exchange would be what, one, one to two in an hour? Air exchange?
Yeah, it would, it would be significantly lower, but off the top of my head, I don't have a, what the current range would be.
Okay. And then the other thing is, the difference in the rates is that you, everyone pays a higher energy rate in the summertime, which is July, August, and September. So those rates dramatically go up, so it doesn't, so it, it affects everyone across the board.
Yes. Well, I'm just talking about actually base consumption, not, not the rate.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Those rate costs are, what they're charging are actually an elevated amount to meet demand because they have to have a reserve on hand in case a generator station goes down. So, and they've got to make up for power factor losses also, so.
Yes.
Yeah, so. Well, I like the concept about trying to find ways that are low in cost that, that'll pay benefits in the long run as far as the operation of the facility. And we know it's oversized, you know, a good portion of the, the hospital is, has been demolished, so we're just looking at a downsized version, but the power plant itself is, was designed for a much bigger facility, so.
Things like the chillers and the boilers were designed for the, the whole facility, and we're using it for half.
Well, my question, we're, when we look at marketability, really, we've got a building that has two potential markets. One is office space and one has medical space with the, the medical gas piping and the air exchange there. So at this point, where we're marketing the building, maybe we need to put it on the market to see which interests is there. You know, there's a couple potentials for medical, but then there could be office space interest also. I noticed with the contract, it said that, and maybe this is following along that same thinking, that, it said that the study remained property of PEC. If a buyer comes along, we do the study, I think we should have this, and we don't do the work, have the contract written so the study could be passed on to that buyer, and then they would have the opportunity to make the changes if we don't. At this point, we don't know how quick it'll sell, what the schedule will be, long-term action, and the cost to make the changes. I guess, maybe to clarify, if we do a study, we need the cost estimates or projection of probable cost to do the different phases, which one might involve replacement of chiller and boilers to a more appropriate size for the building. But we have all those cost figures to make logical steps in proceeding with modifications. But the modifications should not be, I think, immediately done until we know the marketability and the direction. If, if there are medical interests in the facility and we change them, and now they've got to go back and change, that would maybe be adverse marketing for that interest. And it appears there might be one or two possible avenues in the medical field that we could pursue. But the professional space, office space, you know, that's, that's out there also. So I guess, looking at the steps to do, of course, and Commissioner Hayes has mentioned about addressing the marketability and getting the building out to market, so that would be done immediately or as soon as possible. The study then could come along to provide the information and direction of how to reduce energy savings, which could be available for us or for a future buyer. And then actually implementation of the, the work, looking at the, the time schedule for fire EMS facility and renovation phase, phase two of existing, the 1916 City Hall, some of it might not be relative to go ahead and do it if we're, we're able to occupy that. But is that logical to look at kind of those different steps?
I, I would think absolutely. This phase, this particular study, though, was, was much more modest because it, any very large sort of project like that, I actually told them to disregard at this point. That, that would have been their original proposal. And when I said, "Let's look at things where we can get, you know, one-year sort of payback" so that we could, and these would be simple sorts of projects that wouldn't involve taking a boiler out of service, wouldn't involve taking the chiller out of service, but would involve, again, changing the pulleys on fans rather than changing out motors or VFDs or something would be, something would be easy to reverse regardless what type of building was used. And so we could potentially reap the energy savings right now to pay for the study plus the project, even while we still owned the building on the earliest timeline for occupying the new City Hall.
Okay. So their, their study, though, the minor modifications would still take into consideration the capacity of the boiler and chiller so they don't reduce airflow significantly enough to cause us another problem?
Yes.
By, because boilers and chillers just operate it. There's not a lot of variation of what they're going to produce, and if you don't use that, you've got to have a way to waste it. So, you know, and, and air movement across the coil is how it dissipates what it's producing. So they're going to come up with a report, and all that's going to be taken into factor for their minor changes.
Absolutely. And that's, you know, frankly, why I wanted to go and have a professional engineer do the studies, because you can do tremendous damage to a building by running the HVAC system improperly.
Right. And it's kind of doing that now when you've got chiller and boiler designed for one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet doing sixty. That's some of the struggles you're having tweaking the system to make it operate the way we need.
Yes.
Okay. Well, you know, I think, I think the study will be beneficial for us or for a future buyer, either way. It just depends on scheduling. So, you know, fifteen thousand seems to be a reasonable fee. But my question was, like I asked, that we're going to get the study, look at and implement with, taking into consideration the other things with fire EMS in 1916 City Hall?
And absolutely. And in fact, you know, the, the, nothing in the study would be implemented without reporting back first to the commission and getting approval.
Very logical approach to bring some solutions to, in the end, save everyone money. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
John, just two things from me this evening, and that is, I'm delighted to see that you are willing to take a look at projects, large and small. So many times, I think, we miss the opportunity for a near-term, right-now improvement, as we tend to bundle a lot of these into a bigger package sometimes and don't take advantage of the opportunity that is right in front of us. And so these smaller, being willing and able to take advantage of smaller projects with shorter-term paybacks are a way that we can continually improve our processes and not, not have to wait for the, the big financing options that seem to take a long time to get done. So that's, I appreciate that. We'll take a look at them. We'll do the cost-benefit, and the ones that have the best payback, hopefully, we'll immediately implement and start reaping the benefits. So let's do that. I appreciate that, and I appreciate your willingness to do that. And then secondly, just to kind of reinforce the idea about marketability, I'm not a real estate expert. I know there are real estate experts out there. But one thing I understand about our current marketplace, it, it is a global marketplace for virtually everything. I don't care what kind of business you have. With the use of the right internet platform, you can market your product or your property to the entire planet Earth. And so it's a matter of getting us, and this is probably more for Kelly, but it's a matter of getting us in contact with the right people so that this building gets the broadest marketing efforts and that we can find somebody who will be a real good match for the community. Thank you.
John, will you make sure that the study can be used by a future buyer too?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So do you want to, Jeff, do they need to edit the agreement to, to make that change?
And based on past conversations with PEC, I don't think they would have any objection. I'm not speaking for them, mind you, but I, they have been very easy to work with on any changes we've requested, so.
Okay. It's really not a significant, it would go back to them providing additional services to a future buyer too, I, I would think so. Just making sure that they can look at it. Some of the consultants get pretty defensive of their work.
All right, John. If there are questions, thank you, John. So are we good to follow the motion as it's written?
Would that be accurate?
I think so. I don't remember seeing anything in there restricts. Once we pay for it, it's our evaluation.
Okay. All right. And I entertain a motion?
I move authors, I move authorize execution of the contract with PEC for fifteen thousand dollars to perform the HVAC study on Building D.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. All right, moving along. Items for commission action. Item A, consider adopting a resolution rescinding previous condemnation action for eight eighteen East Edison Street. David.
Mayor, this was a structure that was involved in a fire, and the owner rehabbed the facility, and I believe she's an consultant now, but it went through the HUS process and was put back on the market, has renter in it, and we just missed rescinding the condemnation on it. So that's why we're bringing it back here, so we can clear that off the title.
That's great news. We were able to have someone come in and basically make the repairs and be able to turn around and sell it.
Yep.
And have another homeowner in the neighborhood.
Correct.
And we don't have to worry about a blighted property.
Exactly.
That's a great turnaround. I'd like to see more of that. Commissioners, do you have any questions for David?
I don't have any questions.
I don't.
Okay. I entertain a motion?
I move to adopt a resolution rescinding previous condemnation action for eight eighteen East Edison Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Item B, consider bid received for the removal of five oh five North Twenty-Fourth Street.
Mayor, we only received one bid. We did send it out to multiple, and we received one back from JR B Industries, and we are recommending awarding that bid for fifty-four hundred dollars to them for removal of this structure.
This was the one that we fast-tracked because of the condition and, and that, and we needed to make sure that we removed it as quickly as possible.
Yes.
Okay.
And he is available to, he's in town doing work right now.
Okay.
And available to get on as soon as available.
Okay, great. Commissioners, any comments?
I have no questions.
I'm good.
Okay. I entertain a motion?
I move to award a bid receipt from JR B Industries Incorporated in the amount of five thousand four hundred dollars to remove the structure at five oh five North Twenty-Fourth.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Item C, consider recommendation to authorize ventilation work for 1916 City Hall. Vance?
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor.
Good evening, Vance. How are you?
Thank you. I'm good. Thank you for having us this evening.
Yes.
What, what we wanted to do was to report back to you and the commission about the bids that McAllen Gordon has received on this project. As requested, we have separated the ventilation project from the waterproofing project so that we can move this along as quickly as possible. So if you don't mind, I'll turn it over to the folks at McAllen Gordon and let them present. Hi, this is Alan Youngers with McAllen Gordon. I am here to present to you the costs that we've pulled together for the ventilation. The proposals or request for proposals were sent out in late July. We did receive two HVAC or ventilation bids back as well as two electrical bids. That cost combined as well as the lubers, the removal and reinstallation of the windows, and all work involved with that ventilation was forty-four thousand seven hundred sixty-one, and that is what we are bringing to you today. There is an estimate narrative in your packet that explains the scope and exclusions, and I'll stand by for any questions you may have.
On the, one question about the exclusions, are there costs coming in to the city for the various items, sales tax, plan review fees, design fees, temporary power? Are we going to be looking at, at cost factors in those areas too? Are we gonna be looking at, at cost factors in those areas too?
I would request a clarification there from David or John. The sales taxes, our understanding is an exempt project, and so we do not have any sales taxes, plan review fees, there's really no plan to review there for permitting, but that would be a decision for you to make. The temporary power, we are connecting to the existing panels that are in the building towards the southeast corner, and anticipate you have a meter and are paying that fee now, so any power that the exhaust fan should use during use of the temporary ventilation would be charged to that meter that's there.
Construction testing and special inspection fees or expenses, is that something that we, is planned to be billed or that would be an unforeseen cost at this time?
No, that pertains to more if you wanted a moisture meter in that lower level.
Okay.
And we have not included that as part of our cost.
Now, with the, you mentioned the tax-exempt, have we got a tax-exempt number for this part of the project, or was it just for the demolition contract?
It's a project exemption, so each project has its own sales tax exemption.
And we've already.
And it's easily applicable in the state, and we'll get it back in a day.
Oh, okay, good. Well, you know, looking at what we've talked about, I think there is a lot of logic in proceeding with ventilation. Right now, it's hard to determine what the moisture on the surface is from. It could be the humidity in the air and the temperature of the wall, you know, like a glass of water dew point reaching on the wall. Normally, you know, a basement would leak through holes or spots, not a whole wall surface, so this does give us the opportunity to ventilate and clean up some of the air to have a more accurate look at what's taking place in the building, so it looks like a pretty reasonable bid that you received.
Commissioner Hayes?
I guess I have just one question, and that is, is the reason why the, the windows are, that we've just installed, being replaced with louvers, is because the draw from maybe another portion of the building is too restricted, and we can't get enough flow for, let's say, bringing the air in from further back in some unimproved, through some unimproved or some future replaced window, or maybe a window that already has a plywood plug in it? Is that, is that why we're removing the new windows?
Mr. Mayor, I can, I can try to answer that question.
Go ahead.
So, Commissioner, we, we have talked to the engineer about the way to bring fresh air in, in order to draw what he's requesting warm air down into the lower level, so that we can help dry out the masonry walls down there. We did look at trying to pull air from the apparatus bay, and our issue there was we only had one door opening to try to pull air through and down the stairs, and so in his initial review and calculations, his request was to remove the glazing from the window that's in there, install a louver that could bring that air in. If you are concerned about that, I can certainly go back and ask that question, and see if, see if there is not an alternative way of bringing it in that still satisfies his needs from an engineering perspective.
My concern is, is that the windows in the apparatus bay and on the second floor will need to be replaced at some time anyway, and therefore, pulling them out and putting a louver in at this point does not undo any brand-new construction, and therefore, doesn't, doesn't mean that we have to pay twice for the same window installation. So, that was, that was my concern about that, and if you would check on that and see if it actually satisfies the airflow requirements to bring it in from, from further back into the apparatus bay, that would be, I would appreciate that.
Yes, we can do that.
Secondly, there are notes on the drawing here that aren't specifically called out in the scope of work that I would like to draw your attention to. On the first drawing in the notes section, there are four items that are called out, and it is fix all sump pumps, sump discharge to street or hard surface away from building wall, clean out all area-way drains, and snake perimeter drain tile. Is that inclusive of the $44,000 bid or not?
That's a great question, Commissioner. That, those notes are not included in this number, that was anticipated to be part of the waterproofing solution that we are working on currently.
So, I understand the goal of the, of the ventilation is to dry out the basement and dry out the air within the building, so that it is not so damp, and so that additional mold growth and other deleterious effects are, are minimized from that moisture remaining in the building. The sump pumps are not working at this point, and there is possibility that drains are clogged and, and perimeter drain tile is, is clogged, so there will still, until we can get waterproofing done, there still is a chance that additional water will infiltrate the basement, is that correct? There will be other water leak into the basement? If, given, given wet conditions?
That is a potential, I believe the last time we were out there and did a walk of the facility, the sump pump was pumping out, but it was not getting too far away from that window well, it was essentially right at the perimeter there, so there could be some water that is, is getting back down into that window well from that sump pump, but the last time we were on site, that pump was working.
Maybe there's something the city staff can do to help, help get that water a little further away from the window well in the near term. That was my questions. I think that ventilation is absolutely crucial, as we don't want to lose the ground we made from the initial Phase One work while we're, while we're in between, as it were, so I support, support moving ahead with the ventilation project.
Vance, are you gonna remove the whole window or just the snap trim and the glazing?
The, the plan was to remove the snap trim and the glazing, leave the framing and the panning system in place, but I think Commissioner Hayes has asked a very good question, and we will go back to the engineer and see whether we can pull air. It will be further away from the opening that was preferred by the engineer, but we'll see if we can do that. The idea is that we would do it in a way that would not damage the frame, and that the glazing could be put back in its place.
So, the, the most, and it's covered in the cost, would be replacing the snap trim with new snap trim? Correct?
Yes, that, that's all we anticipate.
Okay. So, with the, with the rock backfill around the, the building and the perimeter drain, there's really not a lot of locations that there would be hydrostatic or direct pressure on the basement wall, would there?
So, that is certainly the, the question that we've asked, and that's why we have recommended to the commission that you approach this in a methodical and logical way. We certainly knew that the exterior masonry had a, had a number of open mortar joints, that the windows that were in place leaked, and the roof was leaking as well, so our approach was that we would take those steps necessary to try to determine where and how water is entering the building. We've taken care of the exterior up above grade, and we are still receiving and seeing moisture come through the masonry walls, especially along that south wall and in the southwest corner, which is near where everything comes together in, in the pump. That certainly could be an indication that the waterproofing is, is failing. When McAllen Gordon brought their infrared thermography camera out and, and did their testing, we looked at the floor condition, because when you walk down there, in certain areas, it looks wet, that's staining from some other items in the past, and the floor itself did not look wet, so we're not anticipating that we have hydrostatic pressure forcing its way up. In addition to that, as we talked last time, we do have our elevator pit, which would be the lowest element in the basement that has a perimeter drain, it has sump, and the sump, the last time it was checked, was also working and pumping water. So, we, we feel like that we are doing everything that we can, but we certainly believe that the 30-year-old waterproofing system certainly has, has reached the end of its useful life, and, and it is appropriate for us to move forward with the waterproofing. But, as requested by the commission, we have broken the ventilation work out separately, let's get that going, let's start drying out the masonry, and then we'll address waterproofing in the future meeting.
Well, I think this way, you dry out the surface moisture in the building, then it's gonna, it's a logical process, instead of jumping in and doing a lot of extra work, it'll start pinpointing where water is actually coming through, if it is a blanket problem or if it's concentrated, you know, we know the north, northwest corner of, of the north wall and, and the south, or the west wall there, had water running in heavy rains out, so it's a really logical process to, let's dry it out and get the conditions, so we can see, you know, the library is a similar-aged building, and it was renovated and was able to get satisfactory conditions to utilize the basement, so this is good, and we talked about the drainage from the east running towards the building too, so it starts giving a step-by-step approach for addressing the issues.
All right, any further questions?
I'm good.
Commissioner Fliss?
No, not about the water, the air ventilation. On, you did have a, a schedule shown, how are we coming on the options for the access to the old jail and evidence storage? Are you getting close to showing us something on that?
So, yes, Commissioner, and we are working to have the meeting next week with Kelly and David and the staff to review the different options, looking at the cost perspective, looking at the space utilization perspective. It's still preliminary, but we want to present it to staff first, make sure that the options that we're looking at meet, do meet the needs, and that way decisions can be made. So, that, that is certainly in the works, and we hope to have a conclusion of that here shortly.
And that, you looked at the loading of the old jail floor for record storage?
Yes, we did, and, and the loading of the historic floor does not comply with today's codes for storage, so it would be a matter of making sure that we post the load limit based on the engineer's calculations for that floor. It certainly doesn't mean that it, it, it certainly means it still can be used for storage, but we would have to make sure that, from a management perspective, that we don't overload the floor as you move materials up there. It does mean that the high-density shelving that we were looking at utilizing up on that third floor cannot be used up on the old jail floor.
Okay, that, that was what I was wondering, I think the load was, what, somewhere around 250 pounds per square foot, and it's pretty significant for a building built back 1916.
Yes, that's correct.
So, maybe we'll have something to look at at our next commission meeting? That's all the questions I have for now.
All right, Leonard, thank you. All right, I entertain a motion?
I move to authorize ventilation work at 1916 City Hall not to exceed $44,761.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried, thank you. Item D, consider authorizing acceptance of KDOT City Connecting Link Improvement Program CLIP grants for two projects. Number one, pavement restoration, Penn Avenue, US Highway 75 from Morningside Drive to North City Limits. And item two, surface preservation, Chestnut Street, US 75 from near Penn Avenue to Ninth Street. John?
It was one of the first opportunities I had to address, the commission to bring the request to submit these in, and here they are, so it's some really great news. We've been, the state has awarded both of these to us, and so it's a great opportunity to improve our streets, especially in the north part of town, and just right out there on Chestnut, so.
It'll be nice to see from Morningside Place to City Limits widened.
Yes.
That'll be great.
Absolutely, at the speed that that is, it needs to be, have a wider shoulder.
Yeah.
And it's, it's gonna be very nice to have that.
Yeah, it's kind of first glance, it's just like, it's another resurfacing project, but the significant part is the increased roadbed width.
Any other comments for John on this?
Congratulations, John, well done.
Well, this was the team, this was the team.
Of course. Yeah, but you're the, you're the front guy. That's good, and then, so let's, I need a motion for item number one.
I move to approve acceptance of KDOT's CLIP pavement restoration program funding, Penn Avenue, US 75 from Morningside Drive to North City Limits, and for execution of any necessary documents required by KDOT.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried, thank you. And then, item two on that, surface preservation, Chestnut Street, US 75 from near Penn Avenue to Ninth Street.
I move to approve acceptance of KDOT's CLIP surface preservation program for Chestnut Street, US 75 from near Penn Avenue to Ninth Street, and for execution of any necessary documents required by KDOT.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried, thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right, item E, consider modifying the city's supplemental retirement program. Kelly?
Gentlemen, I have mentioned this to you previously, that we're working on trying to make the City of Independence an attractive place to work, and not only to work, but to stay and to retire. You graciously authorized a retirement program, which has been very well received by our employees. employees. And then this is another step of that. This is the supplemental plan that actually was started in twenty fourteen. The intention was to modify it over the years, but, and to increase the matches, but that did not occur. And so it's been seven years, and we have looked at that, and the administration team reviewed it together, and they are making a recommendation to modify those matches, not only to increase the amount, but to also accelerate the time that you go from one level of a match to another, to incentivize people to stay here. Those new employees that are on capers have a different level of benefit than some of the older ones, because it's been modified over the years by the state, which is something out of our control. And so we really want to encourage that personal savings of our employees, and this is funds that the city can match that is tax-free, and, you know, you're not, it's not taking FICA and things like that out of it. And it's just an opportunity for our employees, because we, when they do retire, we want them to be successful. We don't, you know, want them to be in a bad situation, and, you know, this is to encourage them to do that. So the estimated additional costs, if we have the same level of participation, which right now we're at a little over fifty percent, it would be twenty-five thousand annually, and that's all funds, not just general fund, but that's your, all your utility funds and things like that. And we anticipate, our goal is to have at least a ten percent increase in participation after we modify this, which would be around thirty-five thousand annually over the year. Of course, if you're able to retain your employees, there's funds that you save that's really hard to put an exact dollar to, but every time you get a new employee, and you have to go through retraining, and then the time even when the position's empty and people are having to work overtime to cover and things, there are a lot of costs related to that. So it's always better to be able to retain your employees if you can. So that is the goal of this program, and also to help our employees out, and our recommendation is to approve option two. It would be effective January one, twenty-twenty-two, and they would enroll in December, and our consultant that works for Security Benefit would come in December and meet with the employees. In addition, we have a safety meeting in September, and we would let them know that this change is coming, so that they're aware of that, to try to get as much participation as we can.
I like the option two. I looked at both, and I like the option two. I like the increments, and you've kind of fast-tracked this to where it's, there's an advantage to getting in, make it more lucrative, and it will help in the long run keep employees here. You don't want to go through a lot of turnover, because it does cost money to train, train employees, provide that safety equipment and whatever is necessary for them to do their job, whatever the department that they're in, and the fact that maybe at this point they will see that, that it's been enhanced, and that will be that little push that says, hey, I wanna, I wanna get into this. And it'll keep them from having to feel like they just have to work as many hours because they're in anybody else. Help us to keep the employees from moving on to somewhere else. So I'm hoping that when they hear this, they'll be encouraged, and I hope we, actually, I hope we surpass the goal of ten percent. I'd like to see them get out, and it's so important that they, that they do it early. They do it now. And like I said, you don't miss it after a while, you know, it just comes out, you never see it, and you start early, you get a greater benefit the further you go into your tenure, so.
Correct.
I was happy to see option two. I thought that was the good choice.
Looks like a great plan.
Thank you. Our, like I said, our admin team worked on this together. It's something that I've had on my board to work on, and we'll be happy to move it off to the done column.
I'm prepared to make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to authorize modifying the city's supplemental retirement program as recommended by city staff.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, staff. All right, moving along. Item F, consider adopting a resolution amending the Neighborhood Exterior Grant Program. Lacey, how are you this evening?
Good. Okay, this request is, is coming from the Economic Development Advisory Board Subcommittee. We, the intent of this program was to, to incentivize homeowners to invest in their properties and get out, meet their neighbors, talk to their neighbors, and preserve the housing stock in Independence. And as we got going with administering the program, we realized that there were some gaps missing in eligibility that we, we didn't necessarily intend to exclude from the program. So originally, it was presented that a property must be located in a neighborhood revitalization district to, to qualify for this program. So the addition that's being brought forward today is adding these, basically a three-pronged qualifying criteria. It would be either located in a neighborhood revitalization district, or by Montgomery County records be valued at a hundred thousand dollars or less, or by Montgomery County records be rated as an average minus or below property condition. And there would be one exclusion. All properties located in the floodplain are excluded. So the goal of this is to open up the eligibility and allow for more homes to participate in the program.
Lacey, you might tell them some of the feedback you've gotten from those that called, and they were not in these neighborhoods, and, which is kind of where this came from.
Yes, we received, I think it was two sets of applications, four to six homes, that were, had eligible expenditures, had gone out and talked to their neighbors, received, you know, partnering applications and things like that, but they were just located outside of the zone. One of them was by like a block. And they're, you know, they considered themselves a part of that adjacent neighborhood, so they, it was very hard to explain to them, well, why am I excluded? You know, who, who created those boundaries, and why are they created? Those types of questions came up. So we, we met and said, well, what's the intent and the purpose of this? Is there really any reason to exclude those homes? And the group came up with, well, no, if, if they met these other two criteria, that that's exactly what the program was intended to do. The other comments that I've had on the program are, are more of just where, where did you advertise for this? I think people would like, they didn't know about it until I spoke the second time at First Friday, when we had these, these two homes presented as part of the program. But we've, we've had it at multiple, multiple meetings. I've spoken two First Fridays. It's been in The Reporter. We are going to try and put a sign, like an image that plays at Memorial Hall on the LED sign, so we're looking for more ways to get the information out, but we can only do so much.
And it was just in the newsletter, too, that just went out to everyone.
Lacey, on the Montgomery County records, probably the majority of the housing that they've identified is probably average minus or below, isn't it?
So of, in March of twenty twenty, we, the information that we received said Independence had three thousand five hundred and ninety single-family homes, and of those, three thousand five hundred and ninety homes, one thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine are rated average minus or below, so fifty-four percent of the homes.
Okay. So we're going to, by these added requirements, if they're met, that we're gonna be able to start hopefully making a dent on some of those that fall into that category, so.
Yes. I, I will note that the, the schedule that was included in your packet of available funding has, has changed since this was printed, so I printed one out today. The current amount is eighteen thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-three cents is still available with the original fifty thousand dollars. City funding has completely been expended, and then the Housing Authority put in twenty-five thousand dollars as well, and that's what that eighteen thousand is remaining from.
Are there any pending applications that are up for review? Or they've all been accumulated?
I've had applications turned in, yes, that are outside of the current parameters of the program, but basically said, can you hold my application in case the program requirements change? I don't know off the top of my head the dollar amount of those houses, though.
Okay. So the possibility that some of those may end up?
Yes.
If we go through with this, being able to take advantage of this particular program, you know?
Yes, this has been a very popular program. I've heard a lot of really great feedback.
Great. Commissioners, any questions?
I think that it's appropriate that as we introduce new programming of this nature, and we test it for the first time in public use, that we pay attention to the feedback from the citizens and the participants in the program, and make appropriate changes as this along the way, so that we can be, so that it can be a better program for the City of Independence. So I think these types of modifications should more or less be expected, especially in the early days of this type of program rollout. So thank you for your attentive, attentiveness to this, and I hope that the homeowners that are now avail, that this program is now available to will give it serious consideration. Thank you, Lacey.
It seemed like it was a lot clearer than a straight line down the middle of the street, and the wording was easy to understand. The only, the only thing, the bottom date, you might put a revised.
Because Kelly, I think you changed that for me.
Yeah, I corrected that and sent it to her. I just didn't upload a new one on the website.
I was looking at both and trying, you know, line by line, and the date. It's, it's a good modification to the plan.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no further questions or comments, I entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero twenty-six, prepared by the City Attorney incorporating the proposed changes to the Neighborhood Exterior Grant Program as recommended by the Economic Development Advisory Board.
I second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you. Item G, consider authorizing the installation of electrical service at Celebration Park. Lacey? Or?
I, I think we're recommending that this be tabled until we can have further discussion.
Okay.
I can make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Dean. Yes.
I move to table the installation and monthly payment of electrical service at Celebration Park.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item H, consider submitting to the county for ARPA funds.
Okay.
ARPA.
So each of you should have received the, the packet of summary proposals that I put together, and then also there was a lead sheet that was basically just the summary of, of each of them. So I'll, I'll quickly just go over that summary sheet, and then if you guys have any questions on the individual projects, we can go through those. So we had discussed the comprehensive plan update, that is through the administrative category. Really, we're not asking for anything from the county in terms of dollar, dollar-wise for this. We are just concluding it to encourage them to pursue that comprehensive plan that we would be a part of. I did note on here that we would contribute to the park project in some manner, and would like to add on specific drill-down data in certain areas like traffic or housing, specifically in Independence. So we would be in those conversations when a consultant is selected and a plan is, is drawn out. The next one is emergency services equipment, and this is in the supporting the public health response. The project cost is four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and that includes a new box truck ambulance, power cot systems for the fleet of five ambulances, and three Lucas devices. The next is the emergency services facility. This is the fire and EMS facility, the addition of one bay and living, and living quarters and offices. That project cost is estimated at one point nine million, and our request is four hundred and seventy-five thousand. The next one, still under supporting the public health response, is digital, the digital presence project, and that request is fifty thousand dollars. That one is funding for communication improvements and enhanced online presence capabilities. That would include website design and consulting services, as well as improvements to online bill payment and reservation options. The next is industrial park utility extension. That's under the infrastructure portion. We are requesting two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars to increase the line size out at the industrial park to a twelve-inch line, and then it includes valves and hydrants and a four-inch sewer line. The next is the water treatment plan projects, also under infrastructure. That is the, the, I believe it's a five- or six-year plan for the, the water treatment plant, and that total project cost is just under six point one million dollars, and our request is six hundred and five thousand. The next project is broadband fiber lateral line project. The request is two hundred thousand dollars, and that would be to, to do the lateral line extensions to the downtown buildings for fiber internet services. The next is the downtown building grant. We are requesting, under the addressing negative economic impacts, fifty thousand dollars to, to increase. I have it written in here, it could be either to increase the match portion, or to just increase the dollars there, so still have the same program guidelines, just more buildings would be able to participate. And then the last one is the Neighborhood Exterior Grant Program. It would be requesting twenty-five thousand dollars to that program, but it would only be available to homes that are within the two designated census tracts, which were designated by the state of Kansas, to be in the hardest-hit communities. And it's tracked ninety-five oh four and ninety-five oh five, I believe. Any questions?
On the, the funding for, for housing, you know, we've, we've got matching funds, but what about those that are unable to come up with their part? Do we have a program, or can we include in this program? We've changed our electrical entrance requirement, so if the power is off, the homeowner has to, out of their own pocket, come up with money for the disconnect, maybe a new panel, and, you know, some of the extremely low income, they don't have money to contribute at all, plus elderly. And, you know, the whole purpose, I think a rescue plan is kind of focused into that, that niche, and, you know, money for roofs, or a lot of the homes are with window air conditioners and floor furnace or radiant heating that, you know, if, if they could get in a central HVA system, the savings would benefit in energy use. Is there any way we can provide money for, for that group that just can't come up with anything towards? that just can't come up with anything towards their?
It would have to be only within those two census tracts that I mentioned would be the the only qualifying homeowners, I I believe.
Well, you know, it's a start if it's just those tracts, if those people are living there that can't afford it. We've got a significant impact with the the electrical entrance.
Do you want to add it to yours or?
The Housing Authority, the Housing Authority is submitting a hundred and five thousand dollars for rehabilitation in those two census tracts. That those things that you are bringing up would be eligible.
That the the homeowner has has no money, if they have no money to put in, that they can?
They they would have to meet the income requirements of low income.
Right.
Yes. And then those, those things, as well as some others, that we, you know, if there was ADA accessibility issues or some other things, weatherization issues, those would all be eligible for us to look at. So that is something that we, we have asked for a hundred and five thousand dollars for that.
Okay.
Through the Housing Authority.
ADA would only be specific to the need of the person, right? Like a ramp or?
Correct, they would have to show, yes.
That they would be funded a hundred percent?
Yes, depending on, we we can have different income levels, those that are extremely low, a hundred percent, those that are low, it can, it can move.
Yeah, because I'm thinking of the ones that are, you know, you look at the cost of living increases and the gas. There's, you know, if you've got a two hundred dollar budget for food for the month and the way the costs are going up, there's only one thing you can do. Well, if you don't have the money to increase your budget, is buy less food. So how are you going to have money for a roof? Or how are you going to have money for the service entrance and, you know, or or windows? You know, there's just so much there, they're just facing a dead end that this money would be ideal to help out. But housing is going to to cover that in your recommendation or your request.
That's part of our request.
Oh, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, that.
Thank you.
That explains my concern, I appreciate it.
And the Neighborhood Exterior Grant was one that we we kicked around, should we submit for that or or the Housing Authority. But since it's our program, that's why that one is included under ours.
And that's specific to that, those two tracts?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
That was the only questions I had.
Commissioner Hayes.
I'm, I apologize that this is slightly off topic. But Leonard and 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 the rest of you, if you are not within one of these census tracts and you have this type of emergency and you are a qualifying person, the Community Mission for Improved Housing also has funds available for these types of emergency situations to improve your housing and get you back into your home. So check that out if you're not in the census tract or if you're in a low income situation and you have an emergency at your home. Community Mission for Improved Housing.
Okay, that's good, thank you. That's good to know, that's just another source of revenue to where if someone doesn't fit in that particular category and it's an emergency, they don't have to wait. We can get help to them as as soon as logistically possible, so thank you for that point, Dean.
You're welcome, I have no further questions.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that, Lacy.
Okay, we're all good with this list of items to submit? Perfect.
Okay, so entertain a motion on this.
I move that we approve the submission of the presentation to the Montgomery County Commission.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, thank you. Thank you, Lacy. Report, the July twenty twenty-one sales tax report.
The July twenty-one, twenty twenty-one sales tax report showed an increase of one percent from July of twenty twenty. So receipts totaled a hundred and eighty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars, which is an increase of one thousand eight hundred and two from July of last year. It is the second highest July receipts in the ten year history. And to date, we have collected one million two hundred and ninety thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars from that one percent sales tax annualized. This, this is projected to collect two million two hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars or about two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars over our budgeted amount for the year. Any questions?
Good news.
Yep. We've already collected sixty-six point seven percent of our budget year to date, so. Great. That's good, we've been able to pretty well maintain a pretty good path through all this, so. Thank you to to all the citizens out out there and the people that come to our area and shop and buy items.
Thank you.
Any further questions, gentlemen?
No, I have none.
Oh, thank you, Lacy. We've had a chance to, everyone should look at the city board minutes as far as park, park board and PNC, City Rec, Library, Economic Development Advisory Board minutes.
I have.
Leonard?
I have no questions.
No questions, all right. Moving along, item seven, City Manager's Comments.
Uh, yes, we wanted to give you an update on the Whiskey Creek, a couple of projects relating to that. David, you want to cover that?
Yes, Cherry North to Walnut, which was approved, has, I'm obviously eating the moment of it, has been completed, Laurel to Walnut is the project for this year. And that should be starting within, he was hoping the end of the month, but it should be started and completed within the next thirty days. And Laurel to Pine, which would be the next part of that, has not been approved. And I don't know that we budgeted it for next year. So that's something we may need to talk about or.
Okay.
Water Crews hat are starting to clean out the drainage pipes along Whiskey Creek. And that is the pipe right there at Sycamore Street and Twentieth.
And that was done this week.
Okay, good. When we had turned in for a grant for work on Sycamore Street and we returned down and then we're going to resubmit again to see if we can get a grant for that. Will that include what we're looking at right here on the screen, redoing that?
It was the Twentieth and Sycamore area.
Yeah, I mean, we did, did we do an overlay and another grant that just did the improvements here? Seems like we applied for two different ones that got turned down.
I think he's talking about the Egonite Development Grant and.
Right, yeah.
Lacy put that together.
Yes, and we were turned down for that, which would have improved that culvert there and extended that over towards back behind, towards.
Catalytic or?
Yes.
Right. So then will we go ahead and and then apply for that also again?
I believe that is our plans to apply for that again next year.
You might verify, is that Lacy still here?
So if if we get those two grants, then this will all be coordinated to where we'll do the, we'll do all this in conjunction. Not only the the mill and overlay, but we'll also address this part with a different grant.
Well, if if we're able to get it funded.
If we get it funded.
It's, it's kind of hard to get those economic development grants. But with the infrastructure money that's coming down from the federal government, I don't know how, we don't know yet how that's going to affect some of our applications.
And what will be available and sure, so.
I, you would think with the continual part of the flooding issues, we're trying to work our way back north that it would seem to me like government wise, FEMA wise, that would be something that they would look at and say, yeah, that needs an improvement. Because the design was something, I don't know, how many, how many years back does that go? If that was put in, I have no idea, but.
Not like the.
Fifties?
Long time.
Yeah.
Forties?
Before my time.
Yeah.
You have any idea, Leonard, when that was done?
That culvert?
Yeah, right there.
I'd guess, you know, twenties or thirties with the brick arches.
Doing, yeah. Yeah, it's, it was old, I didn't have any idea, but I knew it was old, so, okay, well, good.
May I ask a question then about the Whiskey Creek Project? Each time I see progress being made on this, I, I ask this question. So it may sound familiar, and that is that the the stumps that remain, are we treating them with a herbicide that will prevent regrowth of those trees? And if not, do we have a plan to do so?
We are, John and I just visited about that this last couple of weeks. We're trying to decide whether we can do it staff or reach out to some local guys that can spray and get in there and spray it. We are going to get it sprayed in the next thirty days, so.
Awesome.
But yes, that is definitely on our radar, we do not want trees growing back up in there.
I know new, I know new trees will sprout from seeds. I'm, I'm not concerned about those so much as with the root system in place and of course well watered in the ri- in the riverbed. They will try to grow from the stumps. And so that could cause a rapid re-clogging of these waterways if we don't treat the stumps so that they don't regrow.
Trying to figure out the best way to get in there and spray.
Okay.
That's what John is trying to figure out, but we hope to have it done in the next thirty days.
Thank you.
Yep.
On, on that note, and there are, there will be some work done along that stretch in that neighborhood on the Whiskey Creek from Oak, basically all the way to the tracks?
Yes, we are, one, we're going to get up there and clean out the culverts and do some work. This last flood or not, we, it was a flash flood of the, we had about three weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, had a little damage right there just south of beach with some erosion. The street department is getting in there to correct that. We had a tree that fell over and damaged some property due to erosion in there. So we're getting that taken care of. But definitely right by the bridges, making sure everything's clean and passable.
Okay.
So, yes, and that work is, they started here at Sycamore and they're moving all along those culverts now.
So anything past where where our responsibility is actually homeowner's responsibility as far as the, the weeds and the grass that are overgrowing, it's, it's actually up to them to keep that.
Yeah, we're just making sure the creek bed is open, we have no blockages or anything like that.
Okay.
We're checking all that.
And now we can actually go in and widen that, that's, that's against.
No.
Core.
Right.
Right, we're very limited as to what we can do.
Can't widen or raise it.
Or raise it, okay. And can we remove silt?
And we're.
At points where maybe it's, instead of a waterway, it's basically non-existent.
You know, I was just talking to Janelle and Katie at KDW. And we can do work in there, we can't raise above. You know, some people have put their own rock or something out there. And that's allowed as long as they don't go above a certain height. And she said we were within our rights to go back in and fix that bank and, you know, take care of those. But to go in there and do any excavating or anything like that, no, not without a permit from them.
Okay, I've tried to explain that to people that have asked me questions in the past. That we're very limited, I don't know what's been done in the past. But I said, we're under the regulations of the core and they're very specific on what you can and can't do. So, you know, this is who we have to follow, so.
Yep.
Wasn't there, wasn't there some limitation on tree removal along the banks?
Absolutely, we could, we cannot take the stumps out. I mean, we're, and that's part of, I think, what Dean was saying, the stumps are there because you don't want to pull those roots out and disturb the bank, so.
The bank becomes unstable.
Absolutely, and that's kind of what happened, that eroded out that tree and all those, that root just pulled that whole bank out when it fell over.
And the other one was that there was poison ivy on some of those crossings where the sidewalk, where the bridges are crossing.
We will get that sprayed.
That was getting poison ivy is pretty prevalent here right now, so.
Yep.
Okay, great, great to hear that.
And then staff started, so actually several months ago started on it, but going through this process of of replacing our phone system with a VoIP system. And as it so happened a few weeks ago, we lost our current system, which was too old to replace, which is why our voicemail isn't working and we're not able to transfer calls and things like that. So we're trying to accelerate that, getting that new contract in. And what we're looking at would not increase our annual cost. And it would be a five year contract. And since it wasn't an additional cost, we plan to handle that administratively. But if you guys want it on the agenda, we're happy to place it on the agenda. Just let us know that, but we're trying to get it done as soon as possible.
Good. That kind of hinders the operation if you don't have a, a current, up to date, working phone system. So it's very important that we fast track this and get this up and running as soon as possible, good.
So you're okay with me just taking care of it?
I'm okay with it, yeah, just go ahead and do it.
And then last, it's just a reminder that you have that special commission meeting coming up next week on Wednesday at nine o'clock on the water plant master plan.
All right. Do we have any, oh, Commissioner comments? Commissioner Hayes, do you have any comments this evening?
I have none this evening.
Commissioner Kavlisch?
I don't have any.
And I do, I do have one question, Kelly. We had gotten, Cornerstone has finished their work.
I just got them today, the two surveys.
Okay, at nineteen sixteen and then at the eight of eleven.
West Laurel.
West Laurel. So was that, that was part of the holdup as far as us being able to proceed? They've done the, the, have they done the geotechnical survey?
They've done whatever they were requested. One of the, they originally sent us, sent the survey, we sent it to Vance and he wanted some modifications made, which he sent back to them. And then we just got that, that back, so.
So at this, well, once that's approved, then we will be able to move forward as far as.
Well, then we can get a recommendation on like splitting the lots, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, okay, good, good.
Well, we have a copy of the master plan before Wednesday to look through.
Do you have the final master plan, John, is he still here?
No, he's.
He stepped out.
Saw an email, Kelly, to you with that.
Okay, because only one I saw before was that draft one that we sent out. But if you've got the final one, we could send that.
I think I saw an email to you, Dave, it may have been the draft one that he sent, said for the meeting next week.
I have on my calendar tomorrow to, to, he sent me some information, but I hadn't had time to go through it because we've been so busy on this other stuff. But my plan was to send you guys some information about the special meeting tomorrow by the end of the day.
If we could have a copy of the master plan before Wednesday, it's always easier to look through it and be prepared than try and digest it all at once. And a printed copy is easier to look through than a, than electronic for me.
So, yeah, he sent me one, it doesn't say draft on it, so it must be what they recommend. And like I said, I just haven't had a chance to look at it yet.
Okay.
So I will get that information to you tomorrow by the end of the day.
All right, that's, that's the only comment I had, Kelly. And any public concerns, David? None. All right, item ten, executive session. The first one is item A. I make a motion, I move that we recess for an executive session for consultation with an attorney representing the city regarding a legal issue pursuant to the attorney client privilege, privilege exception found at KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two. And can I extend that? You had originally said twenty minutes, another five so we can.
Yeah.
And so we'll make it for twenty-five minutes and we will resume at?
Eight forty-five.
Eight, seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five. That's the motion?
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And that'll be Kelly, David, the commissioners, Lacy and Jeff.
The city attorney and Seth Jones.
And Seth Jones.
Right.
And then he'll come in.
Right.
Yeah.
Did you make those copies?
All right, the meeting is back in session. There was no action taken. And we are going to go into another executive session. So I move that, the motion is I move that we recess for an executive session for discussion of an employee's performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception, KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one. And the meeting will resume at eight twenty-five.
The commissioners.
And it'll be commissioners and Kelly. And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the meeting is back in session. There was no action taken. I make a motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you.